If you can, thanks. I got it, we got it. Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order at eight oh two in the morning and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. If you will repeat after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation under God. Under God, indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
And I didn't mean repeat after me, I meant say it with me, sorry. I think you pretty much know the pledge, Kristin, would you please do the roll call?
Sure, alternate wall is not here, alternate Wu?
Present.
Trustee Sedun?
Present.
Trustee Osaguiela?
Present.
Trustee Derry?
Present.
Trustee Chen?
Present.
And Chairperson Del Meyer?
Here.
Oh, and I'm just letting Vivian to the.
Perfect.
So let me just repeat her name one more time.
Okay, great. Hi, Zevi, welcome. I'm guessing you can hear us before we see you.
Hi, yes, I'm having a problem with my camera, but for some reason.
We had a nice shot of your lipstick.
I tried to flip the camera around.
Oh, it's almost glue, that's what it is.
Yeah, it's glue, it's my kid's glue. I might need to come back in from a different iPad. My daughters is not working for my camera. Oh, I see what's going on. I got it. There we go.
There we go. Yay.
That could post it on it.
We're just doing the roll call. Kristin, you want to continue?
Sure, alternate wall?
Here.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Everyone's here.
Thanks, Kristin. The agenda was posted in City Hall and other on the city's website. Did we receive any public comments from anywhere?
We did not.
We did not. Okay, great. In that case, we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is me, the chairperson's report. I would like to extend a really warm welcome and thanks to our new board members and alternates. I was honored to be invited to participate in the interview process along with the two city council liaisons. And I appreciate all of you stepping up to contribute your time and energy to our board and this really important cause. And knowing you, I know it's just one of many causes you're involved with. Today, it's a new chapter in the history of the Library Board of Trustees and I'm confident that this group will continue the good work of all of those who have served before us. Now, in November of last year, during my first meeting, I laid out five goals for 2022. I was hoping for better coordination between this board and the two library support groups, the Friends and the Foundation. Wanted to arrive at a consensus of this board's responsibilities, whether it was advisory versus fiduciary. Wanted to clarify the library strategic plan and work to ensure its implementation. And then be a resource for the community services director as she staffed to the library position, librarian position. And then to strengthen our board by having our full complement of trustees and two alternate members. Well, as you can tell by looking at the pictures on this Zoom call, two of those things were done. We have our new librarian and we have our full complement of library trustees and alternates. We also resolved the issue of the board's responsibility as being purely advisory. So that just leaves the library strategic plan and coordinating with the Foundation of Friends, which we are working towards right now. And we'll have the entire second half of the year to complete. So we're off to a really good start, you guys. So new people, you're joining a group that's already well underway. Today, we have an agenda item that's going to take up a significant portion of our meeting. It's the well timed advisory board training, which will be led by our city clerk Christina Baker. So I'd like to move through our agenda today with as much speed as possible. But I do think it's important that we all get to know each other since there's some of you I don't know that well and we'd like to do that. So I'd like to conclude my chairperson's report with my brief bio. And then have each of you do the same as part of your trustee reports. That way we'll get to know who's who and what our background is. I'm Steve Del Meyer and my history with San Marino dates back to 1977. I had just graduated from Loyola Marymount University and I spent the summer after my graduation working at the Greek Theater, where I met Ms. Carla Minor, who had just finished her freshman year at UCLA. Now, she lived on Sherwood Road and, yeah, it's a long drive. Yes, that's right. It's a long drive from where I was living in West LA. But despite her being a geographically undesirable, the distance, four years later, we were married. And she was teaching in San Marino as she went for the next 39 years. I worked in Burbank, first at NBC, then at the Disney Channel for nearly a decade. And then at Warner Brothers for nearly 20 years with two different television networks there, the WB and the CW. In 1996, we bought Carla's home, Carla's family's home from her parents, moved here from Arcadia. And our two children, we've lived here ever since, our two children are the products of the San Marino school system. I've served on the Little League Board, the Schools Foundation Board, the Committee to Build the Library. And for many years, the San Marino Public Library Foundation was president of that at the end, until I joined this board in 2019. My career in television was in on air promotion, which is where we take 30 seconds to summarize an entire hour long show, which is how I can summarize the last 45 years of my life in less than a minute. So that concludes my report. Now let's move on to the rest of you and find out who you are and what's all about that. We'll start with Genevieve Chen. Genevieve, if you could please tell everybody briefly about yourself and if you have anything additional to report to the board.
Does that include the liaison report or?
Nope, liaison, we'll get to, no, we'll get to that later.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone, and the welcome, all the new members. And I joined the board 2019 at the same time as Steve. And let's see, I also worked at entertainment business. I worked, but not as many studios. I've worked for a production company when I was in college and then I worked for Falcon Cable for a few years. Then I, majority of the time I worked for Warner Brothers at Burbank. And my son, I only have, I have one child, son, and he went to Warner Brothers School all the way to pre-K. They had a little cute graduation and all that. The studio does a great job for daycare. So after he started San Marino School, I stopped working and become a stay at home mom. Because one day he came home and one of the parents told me he is the only child parent in town for the teddy bear picnic, I think. So I go, I didn't know. I thought I would just need to pack some non-perishable contributions for the picnic. I felt terrible about it because back then at Warner Brothers, it's right on the lot. So any event, I could be there and there's pictures to show. But that was, that kind of pulled the trigger. I called my husband and said, looks like I'm gonna stop working and is that gonna be okay? So from that point on, I become a stay at home mom and start volunteering, participating mainly at Valentine School. I had a blast, let's say. Start from, you know, kindergarten all the way to May Day dance. It's just wonderful experience all the way. And then he moved on to Florence Prep in high school. And then now he's working in the Bay Area. So I am an empty nester. And let's see, what else did I miss? So as an empty nester, I volunteer at Keck Hospital once a week. Pushing wheelchairs and that is, that tells a lot on, I mean, it makes me think about life a lot differently. Appreciate good health is important because sometimes I push people in the wheelchair that is slightly younger than me. And it's not a, it's a complicated feeling, let's just say. And what else? Oh, I moved here since 2000. So I've been here 22 years in this neighborhood. And that's pretty much summed up with my own little bio, quick bio, not as elaborate as our president. I went to the liaison, foundation liaison meeting in person.
We'll get to that later.
Oh, that's right.
That's, we'll do that later. That's next item. Good, good.
All right.
Genevieve, thanks so much. Lois, you're gonna be next. Now, keep in mind, Lois has been a volunteer for so long, this may take off. So Lois, just truncate everything you've done. Just give us the last, you know, 30, 40, 50 years.
No, well, you're right. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay. I've lived in San Marino since 1965, in the same house. And my children grew up here. We moved here when they were in Stoneman. They, three, I have three children. They graduated from San Marino, Ohio, and went on from there. I have been very, I was an active real estate broker in town and I still have my license. I owned Shepherd and Morgan when we had a lot of independent companies. And I was president of the Realty Board four times. Then I, as the board, as the really companies began to consolidate, I was with Coldwell Banker until just recently. I was started with foundation, when the foundation was organized and whenever that was. And I've been involved in San Marino, just lots of things. I also am active, I'm a fellow at the Huntington Library, been on Plan Giving there for over 20 years. That's just about it. I've, oh, I've been president of Rotary, have been active in Rotary for about 30 years. So, you know, when you're old and you've been here a long time, as Steve says, you have a lot of things. But anyway, I've given a lot to the community, but the community has given a lot back to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Lois, true public servant. Let's move on to Deborah Sedun, one of our newest members and returning members, actually.
I took an interruption. Um, well, I enjoyed those illustrious bios. I would just say, in my involvement with the library, in my love of the library, takes me back to the first week we moved to San Marino in 1984. It was a Monday morning and we had just moved here from the East Coast. And my husband goes to the door and he said, bye, have a great day. And I look around, I'm holding my six month old child and my three year old is on the floor. And our house is up to the ceiling in moving boxes. Literally, we couldn't go anywhere or do anything because we were surrounded by moving boxes. I looked at the children and I said spontaneously, come on, kids, we're going to the library. I hadn't stepped foot in the, in the San Marino library, but I knew I could find it. My realtor had pointed it out when she gave us a tour of town. And off we went and it was sort of love at first sight. My daughter connected with the children's library and they discovered they had the same birthday. And they shared that for many years until that librarian moved on. I have been served on a number of capacities at the library. I think I was on, very early on with the Build a New Library campaign. And continued on beyond that professionally. I was a school counselor. And not too dissimilar to Genevieve, I enjoyed my work tremendously. But once I had the third child and they were coming home with notes that didn't make any sense to me from school and a lot of things I was missing, I too made a soul searching decision to be there 100% for them. And I gave up my work and I never looked back. It was so fulfilling. I was on the Schools Foundation, as Steve was. And, and obviously my involvement in the PTAs and the library. Currently, there are two other organizations I'm very fond of. One is called San Marino Junior Alliance, which raises funds for substance abuse programs for women in Pasadena. And the Lumineers, which is the support group for Dohini Eye Institute. But I just think it goes back to, as I've always said, the library is, I believe, you know, a treasure and important for every community. And I want to continue serving in that capacity.
Thanks, Debbie. You kind of skipped over your years on the foundation and the fact that you were a previous member of this board. So that's.
Thank you for adding that.
Kathy, let's have you go next.
Okay, so I am originally from Mexico. We moved here in 2007. I had two boys at a time and my third boy was born here and we landed in San Marino by accident. This was, you know, the first time I was in LA was the day I moved in. And we were so lucky because our three kids went to Carver and even more lucky because two out of them had Mrs. Del Meyer as their first grade teacher. And so I loved Carver so much. Then when my kids graduated, I wanted to stay. It really became my second home. So I became the librarian at Carver since Mrs. Morris retired. So big shoes to fill in, but it's been seven great years working at the library. I, what else? I, you know, my husband works for Nestle, so we have lived in many, many different places. When we move in here in 2007, we have moved 13 times in 15 years. So this was it. We arrived here and we didn't want to go anywhere else. So we've been here for a long time and we hope to stay here for even longer. Our three boys, the oldest one is Loyola Mary Mount. He's an incoming senior. And we have a fellow alliance. And we have an incoming senior in the high school and an incoming sophomore in the high school. So I've done a lot of PTA jobs and a lot of library volunteer jobs too. And that was my way to find friends and to be part of this community where we really feel and truly feel we belong now. And we found, you know, friends that are family now. And I'm really, really excited and thrilled to serve in this capacity now on the board.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Vivian, let's move on to you next. And am I saying it with Vivi, right?
Vivi, yeah, exactly. Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to be here today. My family and I moved to San Marino in 2014, but I'm from Arcadia. So I grew up in Arcadia and then I went to college and school and worked on the East Coast. And then moved back here when I was pregnant with my first daughter. So we were wound up in San Marino in 2014. And I used to work at the Huntington Library, which was a lovely experience. I so enjoyed it there and continue to enjoy helping out there, volunteering and visiting. And I stopped after my third daughter for a lot of the reasons that the other ladies talked about. It got overwhelming. So I have four now kids and they're all in San Marino schools. My oldest is at HMS and my other three are at Valentine. My son's about to start kindergarten in August. So, yeah, so I spend a lot of time at the school. I do a lot of volunteering at the school because my kids are so little. I'm there a lot. And I also have been excited and honored to be a part of the DEI Task Force for the city of San Marino. So that's been a really fun experience and I'm still doing that. But I think it's supposed to be wrapping up towards the end of the summer. And so I'm happy to be here today with all of you.
Welcome. Thanks, Vivian. Sandy, we'll conclude with you.
Hi, good morning. So my family and I have lived in San Marino since 2017 for the last five years. But I'm actually a local San Gabriel Valley girl, grew up in the city of San Gabriel. Then I left for college, left for law school and then met my husband. And my husband actually grew up in Arcadia. So we were both living and working out in Santa Monica for a good number of years prior to relocating back to the area. And when we first relocated back here, we actually lived in, I'm sorry, Arcadia. And we were there for about 10 years, had our kids there and then, you know, relocated here. Growing up, actually, I've actually visited the library quite often when I was growing up. And I actually visited also the Huntington Library, did a lot of projects, school projects. So pretty familiar with, you know, the neighborhood, happy to now be back home. I have two kids currently, one attending polytechnic school in Pasadena and another at Chandler School in Pasadena. And I'm happy to be here and to, you know, serve on this board.
Great, thank you. Welcome. I'm pleased everyone's with us. It feels nice to have the board fully staffed. In case there's anyone taking vacation or being under the weather or whatever, it's like, it's nice having the full complement here. So thank you all again for agreeing to participate in this board and everyone got their fantastic binders. So I'm sure you all read through it and most of it memorized by now. It's a great resource. I'm sure we'll be finding out more from Christina a little bit later. Let's move on to our third item, the Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report. Well, we don't have a Crane Art Gallery Liaison anymore because two of our members have departed us. They're still with us. They're just, they're still alive. They're just not part of the board anymore. So we have two openings, not only for the Crane Art Gallery Liaison, but also for the Friends of the Quo Public Library. So we'll need people to be our new liaisons for that. So maybe instead of having a report, maybe we take this time to look for volunteers who would like to be the new liaison for the Crane Art Gallery. Lois, yeah, Lois, you had mentioned something, working with the art gallery earlier?
I'd use a Friends.
You'd rather do the Friends? Okay, Deborah, you want?
I would love to do the art gallery. I'm involved with the art gallery, so it's sort of a natural.
Perfect. That sounds, wow. Just moving along here, I think. Okay, so let's.
Done, check it off.
Let's have Deborah to be the Crane Art Gallery, but doesn't want to have any other strong feelings. Or wanting to do anything else. I don't, I don't want to just take the first people to volunteer, but, okay, we'll take the first people to volunteer. Okay, Deborah, the crane. All right. And then for the Friends, Lois, you're gonna be the volunteer for that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. All right. So that's agenda number three and five done. Let's move to number four, which is the San Marino Center renovation report. And the task force member is me for that. So I feel like I'm talking a lot in this meeting. But since our last library board meeting, the task force did meet to prepare for the June 8th city council meeting. At that meeting, the council voted to approve the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report. And then to move forward to accept bids from the six pre-approved companies who would actually be doing the construction. It was nice because there were several of us task force members in attendance. I think all but two or three of us were there in person. And several people spoke in favor of the project, which was, which was great. The next step is the city council meeting on Friday, July 29th. It's a morning meeting at 8:30 AM and that's where they're gonna move forward probably to award the contract to one of the bidders. That's a really important meeting, not only for the renovation of the San Marino Center, but for the library as well. Because we want to make sure that this building is a good complement to the library and it moves forward. If it doesn't move forward, this thing's just gonna sit and decay over years and nothing's gonna happen. It can't be sold because the historic nature of it, so it's just gonna sit there and rot. So would love to have as many of you as possible attend that city council meeting. You can do it virtually like you're doing it now because look how easy it is to attend a virtual meeting. Again, that's Friday, July 29th at 8:30 in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I strongly urge all of us to attend that meeting. I'll certainly be there because that's worse guy. The notion there is if it moves forward and gets approved, then groundbreaking would start in September with a 18 to 24 month construction timetable. Yes, Kathy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just letting everybody know that is an in-person meeting and a Zoom or virtual. It's a hybrid meeting. Not that you can only have that option. So it's at the San Marino Center, 8:30.
Right. Thank you very much. Because the city council meetings, they have the capacity to run meetings in person and virtually. And all of our meetings since the pandemic started have been this way via teleconference, which is unfortunate but necessary. We don't have the staff capacity or wherewithal to run an in-person meeting and at the same time offer it virtually. So that's why we've continued that way and we'll do so until further notice, until the city manager decides that it's okay to be back in person again, which most of us would prefer, but what can you do? So thanks for your patience. In the meantime, these meetings are, it's mandatory that you're here. That's, you're trying to attend as many as possible. If, I don't know if Christine is gonna go over this, but in your booklet, it mentions the fact that if you can't make a meeting, please notify me in advance beforehand so we know not to be waiting for you. Because we want to make sure that everyone, we start the meetings on time and we move across them quickly. I am a stickler for moving meetings along in a rapid fashion. But I have to temper that with making sure everybody gets a chance to say what's on their mind. So again, the, the meeting for July 29th is virtual or in person. You can attend either way.
What time?
That, 8:30 in the morning, 8:30 in the morning, Lois, on July 29th.
Thank you.
So if you can't, if you can't come in person, log on to the Zoom call. And I'm sure you can go on the city website to find out that link. Thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Chris. Okay, great. And that concludes my San Marino report. What's that?
Just maybe how to navigate the website, you know, go to the city's website to agendas and minutes. Find the date of the meeting and then click through that. And then you'll find the Zoom link on the front page, I believe. Front, maybe first or second page of the agenda.
Perfect.
I got the clerk on the call.
It's also, yes, it's the second page of the agenda. You can also find the link on the calendar that's on the city's website. If you go there to that date, pull up the meeting, the link to the Zoom will be on there as well, either way.
Thanks, Christine. Appreciate it. All right. And the next agenda item after number four is Friends of the Quo Public Library. So Lois, what's your report? You've been on this for all of 30 seconds. I'm just kidding. You don't have a report yet, but we look forward next meeting to your report. Then let's see, next is number six, the San Marino Public Library Foundation Liaison Report. That's Genevieve. Now's your chance, Genevieve.
All right. So they had first in-person meeting and then Kathy was in front of me and I did not recognize her at all. I only recognized her in this little box, then I know it's Kathy. When she presents herself in front of me, I'm like, who is this? But this voice sounds familiar. So that was my first encounter in person with Kathy. I think we've never met in person before. That was our first time.
And Linda was with me too. You met Linda for the first time.
That's right. That's right. But somehow I did not, I just didn't recognize Kathy at all. She had to speak a little, then I go, you're Kathy. So we had the in-person meeting at Mary's House and food, wine. That looks like the style that the foundation liked to enjoy their meeting. So it's a perk and the meeting went well and it lasted till nine something. Anyway, so a lot of things been discussed, the cater, the possible food choices. Nothing has been set in stone, but there's different options they're thinking. And they're talking a lot of fundraising, you know, live auction possibilities. And again, ticket price is another thing that's been talked about. Whether the price point is gonna be too high, too low or what's gonna be able to generate for this fundraising. Looking at approximately 150 ahead. I don't know how you guys feel. I don't think that we would have any input on this, right? That's the foundation's decision. So I'm just reporting, they're thinking about 150. So that's where they are at. that's where they are at, but anything is not set yet. And Kathy,
Right?
Sorry?
They have a, they have a date selected though for
That's right, tentatively, October fifteenth. Is this Kathy, that's a tentative or that?
I think it, we, it is pretty much the date that they have determined. October fifteenth is their literary libations. We shared a little bit of that information in the directors and the library report, the staff report that we provided. So please do mark your calendars. Cindy and the foundation are fast at work, as Genevieve stated, ironing out all the details for this fundraising event. And then they will be closing, requesting that we close the library for setup on that day. So hopefully you've had a chance to go through the staff report and then what Genevieve is sharing too gives you an idea of kind of the scope of, of the event.
And another thing I have to say, I think it's great that Kathy has been working closely with Cindy. And it seems there is a good vibe and I think this, you know, with the help with the city, I think the foundation is going to do a very, I mean, they always do. They do, they're going to do a very good event. And I have no doubt this is going to be another successful fundraising for this library. I am excited and they're currently having a little fight on what type of food. So that's a minor detail.
The, the one thing I'd add, if I could add really quickly, as we look ahead, is council will need to approve the closing of the library on that day. And once council approves that, not that it has a huge bearing on marketing and promotion, but I know Cindy will be beginning the, the huge marketing campaign and promotion campaign to sell tickets. So please tell all of your family and friends. So that'll be going public probably in the events in October. So probably easily in September, if not late August. So please, she wants as many people to attend and more information to come, but it'll be here before we know it.
And yeah, Kathy agrees to put them in.
Yep. Our activity guide, they'll be,
Exactly.
So it will be featured on our back cover as well as a call out on our main cover and throughout as much as I can help promote, absolutely.
So I think this is going to be great. And then that's kind of a cost saving too, you know? Every household is going to get a copy of the guide. And I think this kind of a collaboration is just what we want to see. So that could
That's the goal. Thanks, Genevieve, yeah, that is the goal. Great, let's move on to our new business agenda item number seven, the approval of minutes. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to read over the minutes. Just for our new people, these meetings kind of run sort of like Amazon meetings where they don't have a meeting without having ever been looking at all the information first. They have a memo, everyone reads the memo, they spend the first half hour reading the memo, then they go through the meeting. We don't spend our meeting time reading the memos. We assume that once you got the packet, you spent your weekend reading it. So, so that speeds up our meetings, so we're not having three and four hour meetings. So hopefully you've read through it. Is there any discussion on the minutes, any comments, any questions, any modifications? I, the only one I had was on page seven of fifty-three. All right, where at the end of the Friends of the Library Liaison Report, it's, the last line says Chairperson Domare shared his hope to increase the Friends' membership in the future, but doesn't want to upset any support group. I'm not sure what that means or what I meant by that. I don't want to upset any support group. I don't, I don't think increasing the Friends' membership would necessarily upset them. But I, I wasn't sure what that meant.
I'll have to look or have to revisit the audio. They might have two separate thoughts and I just combined them into one sentence, but I'll look.
It could be, okay, great. Do I have a motion? If there's no discussion, is there a, a motion to approve the minutes?
I shall move.
Thank you, Lois, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Genevieve. Kristen, do you want to roll?
Um, hold on, I'm receiving a message from City Clerk Baker.
I did something wrong?
I believe asked for a public comment.
Oh, yes, that's the new thing, yeah, ask for a public comment. Did any, did, there's no one on, if there's no one on the call, can I ask for a public comment? There's no one else on this Zoom call, is there? And you're not getting any emails, are you?
Yeah, there isn't, but you should still ask for the public comment in case there was an email or something that came in and then Krista can just confirm no, then we're all
Gotcha. Thanks, thanks for seeing us. See, we're learning. Is there any public comment?
I did not
On our minutes?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, roll call, trustee Sedun.
Yes. I approve.
Uh, trustee Osiguela.
Approved.
Perfect, trustee Derry.
Approved.
Trustee Chen.
Approve.
And Chairperson Domare.
Yes, approve.
Motion passed.
With the minutes. Thank you. Let's move on to item number eight, request to change the format of the minutes. Kathy, do you want to summarize what this is?
I, I will go ahead and defer to Kristen, give her an opportunity and a little practice presenting. Yeah, she really did all the work on the staff report. Obviously I was there right with her, but she probably can do a much better job of synthesizing this and getting us to discussion.
Alrighty, so I hope you all had a chance to read over the staff report. But to summarize it, the library board is currently the only board that does not use the format of the minutes action. Currently we use summary, so the minutes that you just approved, that summary, they take a significant, significantly longer amount of staff time to prepare these minutes. And since the library board is the only one that is exempt from the current city council resolution, making all of them take action minutes. We are proposing that we transition the board back to action minutes, just so that we can better utilize staff time and be in line with all the other cities' boards and commissions. I'm available if you have any questions and I'm sure City Clerk Baker can also assist if needed.
Kristen, these meetings are recorded. And then in terms of the, the, the meeting minutes, how is that, is, is it done by an individual or is it, or do you have software that, that prints them out, you know, verbatim?
No, it's, it's, we do not have a software. Software would be awesome. Currently I'm the one who spends the time transcribing this minutes.
Okay, no. Then I can understand, it would be very time consuming.
Yeah, and let me add, Kristen's being very modest, but it, it can take anywhere from six to eight hours.
Oh my.
Yeah, depending on the length of the meeting.
Depending on the length of comments, but you know, yeah. So and if we went to action minutes, it would take about two and a half hours.
Would the summary minutes still be available since they're recorded in case we need to refer back? Because you know, the action is, is, it's brief and there's sometimes details that who knows, maybe months later we need to refer to or to re-familiarize ourselves with.
Yeah, and I'm going to defer to Kristen and City Clerk Baker. I don't know how long they last or, or you know, what the archived timeframe. Christina, can you comment on that? Since we have you on our call, thank you.
I was just pulling up the retention schedule to see if I could find that. Minutes are the permanent record that we hold on to. And the videos.
And we're moving to Granicus also, right? Are you referring, is there a?
No, not Granicus, it's Priv Gov.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we're only using that for agenda right now, not for minutes.
Got it.
I will say that I think summary minutes are actually the most difficult of all the minutes because verbatim, you don't, staff doesn't have to make a decision on how to summarize. And then action, they're, you, you're only listing the action. So I'm going to, I'll, maybe if there's more questions and come back to me as I look.
Okay.
And to, is there, yeah, is there a reason why this board only have the, the summary of the minutes and not the others?
Yeah, I have the answer to that. The answer was we were doing the, the shorter minutes. And then there was a request from a board member saying, a couple of board members prior saying, hey, there's some nuance that's being left out. We want to, you know, get into it more and we, we could we revert to that? And the staff usually is compliant and wonderfully supportive as they are. I said, sure. Of course, it takes a lot of work to do that. And now, given the strain on, on resources and city staff, where it's like, do you guys really need this? And so so here we are. Other questions?
I think that we should, we should try because as you say, it's, it's staffing is, is right now a very serious issue for, for all city governments and all hiring is, is, is sort of perilous at the moment. So if that's the recommendation, we, we should wholeheartedly support it. But we could revisit it later if it doesn't, if we find that it's not sufficient or it's inadequate for what we are trying to do. But we could give it our, our best shot and, and try to move in that direction. Is my thought, my personal thought.
Okay, is there any other discussion or?
We did find the retention schedule, so it's one year from the approval of the minutes.
Oh, that's, that's terrific.
And honestly, we'll, we usually hold on them for longer than that because they're on YouTube. So we don't really have to take things off YouTube, so they're
Okay, great. Is there any other discussion? And if not, then could I have a motion to accept? The recommendation of the staff? Who wants to make a motion? Right, go ahead, Deborah.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the staff to change to the action minutes from, from summer.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I'd say.
Okay, thank you, Lois. Any, any other final comments before we vote? No other concerns, want to make sure everyone's getting their voice heard? Is there any public comment? Any public comment on, on this motion?
I received none.
Okay, good, all right. Proceed, Kristen.
Okay, trustee Sedun.
Agree with this.
Trustee, sorry, trustee Osiguela.
Yes, approved.
Trustee Derry.
Approved.
Trustee Chen.
Yes.
And Chairperson Domare.
Uh, approve. You, if, if it's possible, could we, could we have the alternates weigh on this, in on this as well? I know there's no official vote for them, but it's good to get them involved in the process and get their thoughts and comments. I don't want them just spectators here. Is that, am I violating anything, City Clerk Baker, by asking for the, for the alternates to weigh in as well?
No, they are absolutely always welcome to weigh in as well. For the official roll call vote, though, it is only full members or if an alternate is filling in to make quorum, then they would also vote. But
Gotcha.
But they are always welcome to be included in any discussion and questions.
Great, and how do I, how do I, if it's not official, how do I include their, their votes and get their voices heard?
Typically what's done at council meetings is that, like, the mayor will ask each person individually if they have any questions, if they have any comments. And let them just say yes or no. And then he would just go through the list and then not what they're included.
Prop poll, kind of.
Yeah.
The, the reason I'm sensitive to this is when I joined the board, I was an alternate and didn't know it. Because, and they treated me like I was a full member and I mean, Genevieve and I were both alternates. We didn't know, we fully participated in everything. And so it, it was, it was great. We didn't feel like the other. And it was, so I just want to make sure that Sandy and Vivy feel the same way, that they're not like, they're not like jury alternates where sorry, you don't get to participate in any way. You're just there if we need you. They're, 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 they're full members in training, if you will, or pro participants. So let me ask Sandy and Vivy what your thoughts or comments are on this, any concerns?
Um, I think I do agree that we should try the action minutes versus the summary minutes in light of the fact that, you know, it is, I understand that the city is currently short-staffed and it does take tremendously long to prepare the summary minutes for the hearings.
Thanks, Sandy, how about you, Vivy?
Um, same, I agree. It sounds like a good change to make. I did minutes for many of my previous jobs, so I wholeheartedly am behind that recommendation too. Can to reduce the amount of time required to prepare them.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think many of us have been secretaries of boards and it's like, meetings, it takes a long time. All right, thanks so much. That's agenda number eight, we'll move on to number nine, the California State Library Report. And is that you, Kathy, is that?
Well, wait a minute.
It's Linda, librarian.
Did we vote, wait, I'm sorry, there was a, there was a, I'm sorry, we didn't pass the vote or was there a vote?
There was a vote.
A motion passed.
Oh, a motion passed, okay.
Motion passed. And then we, then we included the alternates in our discussion.
Got it. But next time we'll include them prior to the vote.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to go ahead, item nine, California State Library Report. This is where Linda has the opportunity to shine in one or two minutes, give us a summary of this. I know that hopefully everybody has had an opportunity to again, read the staff report. And in the interest of time, Linda's going to just give a quick overview.
Hello, thank you so much, Kathy. The California State Library Report is an annual statistics gathering tool that the California State Library sends out to all public libraries in the state of California. So it covers the gamut of like, you know, revenue and participation, circulation rates, collection size, changes to the building. I, and we, all libraries will report that back. The California State Library in turn uses that to create snapshots of the state of public libraries across California. They also use that in turn, they submit it to the different federal organizations that they get grant money from that they then, you know, redistribute to us. So some of the things that you'll see on here as a heads up, especially as we move into next year, they're not set by us. So just, for example, the population size in the state library report does not look like the state or the city population size as reported by the city. Some of these things are just auto-populated by the state library. So you know, other things, we're, we're pulling them from, from our system and taking account of our programs, they vary slightly year to year. And sometimes it's a surprise. So the state library will tell us like this year, we want to know what you did for blah, blah, blah. So they're not, it's not a static document in that those data points, they can shift a little over time. This is also available on the California State Library website. So it's a useful tool to compare our library to other libraries. And you can, you know, play with that data. So if you want to say, how are we in comparison to other libraries in the SGB? You can do that. You can look at how we compare to libraries across the state in terms of, you know, population or income. So it's, it's a useful tool. And it helps us see where we are at over time, you know, just within, within the city. There are, let's see, there's some highlights here, you know, at the top of some of the sorts of things, the data points that we had collected this year. Some of them are different from previous years because, you know, COVID. But that's, that's pretty much it. It gets submitted in fall for the previous fiscal year. So the report that you're looking at right now is the report that had been done last year, pre, most of us, you know, in the room, staff-wise. The one that you're going to be looking at in the fall will reflect the work that's been done with us on board, me, Krista and Kathy.
The final comment that I'll make is just sort of the process and procedure. So this is a report that is
So this is a report that is a receive and file. And so the function is that we would present to you and then you would make recommendation that we take it up to council to receive and file. That is the protocol that we follow as per the California State Library. So
Right.
If anybody has any questions?
No.
If there's no questions, if there are, if there's no questions, we'll need a motion to to approve and file this. I brought, but we motion to accept the this to be filed. Go ahead. What is the language we want to have here?
I make a motion that.
We ratify, ratify the library.
Ratify this. Yeah, go on, make it longer. Page twenty seven, top of page twenty or page twenty seven of fifty three, the recommendation. Yep. By the way, I thought it was an interesting, it was revealing. I know it's more statistical, but I read it carefully. And since I've been at the library a long time, it was an unusual year because it was a coronavirus year and we were closed. But but it was still revealing, so very good job.
No, I thought it was great.
So so the motion can be, if you look at our agenda under number I nine, or not, sorry, yeah, number nine, the recommendation there. That's that's the language that we're looking for here for a motion.
And let's do public comment.
I'll, we have to have the motion first, don't we? The public comment after the second. Am I in the wrong order here? I thought it's motion second and then public comment.
Page twenty seven is is the motions at the top.
Yeah, yeah, it's all, Kathy, it's also on the, it's also on the on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
City Clerk Baker, I'm sorry. So the public comment, is that come after the discussion before the motion or give me the right order here, so I'm not.
So the order that we use is questions, that council asks questions, and then we go to public comment. Sorry, board would ask questions.
The motion.
Then we go to public comment, then we come back for discussion by the board members, and then the motion.
Okay.
Because we we modify, you'll see this in the training, we've modified a little bit.
Okay.
Page seven.
Do we have, do we have any public comment, Chris, on any of this? Okay, great. All right. And then, Deborah, have you, are you prepared to make your motion? Or have you?
I wanted to follow the exact wording, but for some reason, did you say it was on page seven or eight? Twenty seven. Oh, I went to, okay, but on page twenty seven. All right, here we go. Also pointed out that it is on the agenda. All right. Okay.
Same thing on the agenda.
I make a recommendation that the board ratified the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, twenty one California State Report. And I recommend that it is ratified by the city council. Is that okay?
Thank you. So moved. Great. Do we have a second?
Thank God.
Okay, Kathy seconds it. Great.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Sedun.
Approved.
Trustee Osagüela.
Approved.
Trustee Derry.
Approved.
Trustee Chen.
Approved.
Chairperson Del Meyer.
Approved. And again, I forgot to include our alternates in the discussion in calling my name. I'll get better at it. Christine, I promise. It's it's a new system for me. Now that we voted it's approved, before we move on to the next item, Sandy and Vivy, Sandy, did you have any comments on on the library report? Or thoughts?
I have no comment here for me.
Okay, Vivy?
No comment for me either.
Okay, so I I think what I'd like to do, just with, just the two of you are included when we say any discussion on this. That's your opportunity to jump in and give me any thoughts or comments on on that. And then we'll we'll try and get your opinion on it prior to our voting. All right. Slugging through here. All right, agenda item number ten, the Director and City Librarian Report. Kathy?
Uh, okay, thank you. This is, this item will always be on your agenda. And it is essentially the staff operational personnel as well as an operational report, as well as anything that's somewhat high level administration. And we love to keep the Board of Trustees apprised of of all the different behind the scenes stuff that's going on here at the library. So under the discussion for the first of the report, I always include personnel updates. We are thrilled to finally be welcoming a full-time adult services librarian. She will join us July fifth. And I I have no idea if I really, really can say her name yet. So I'm going to be conservative and not say her name yet because she's not technically employed yet. So but we are so thrilled that she'll be starting with us next Tuesday. That position's been vacant. It's a full-time position. Linda's been wearing multiple, multiple hats after, because of the vacancies on our part-time side as well as this position. So that's a really exciting, you know, announcement. We've known that she's coming and we know she's moved and we saw the whites of her eyes last Friday. We're really, really excited to be welcoming her. The second thing I'd like to mention is if, is the last item on page thirty six, the front page of the report, our new recreation commission recruitment. If you know anybody, Community Services Division, we not only report to the Library Board of Trustees, but I also report to hopefully a new recreation commission. So please help get the word around. We are accepting applications for that new commission through this Friday. I know we have a few applications. We need more. So please get the word out if you know of anybody who would love to serve and volunteer in that capacity and has a strong interest in in parks and recreation, predominantly recreation programming as we activate R one park. So as well as all the other programming you have here in San Marino. The second item I'd like to call out is on the top of page thirty six. Our very exciting that the Friends of the Library did indeed submit their donation check to us. We received that about a week ago. So they were very generous with their annual donation contribution. We received a check for thirty thousand dollars that will be allocated towards adult and children's programming. So once again, a huge, uh, uh, thank you and our gratitude to them for their generosity. The next part of this report, we always include that a foundation gives us a written report. Cindy, the the Director of the Public Library Foundation, you'll see some details. I know Genevieve spoke a little bit about the literary libations, the fall event. Cindy also gives us a written operations report, so very informative. And then the rest of this report really goes on to talk about operations and programming. So maybe in the interest of time, I will ask if any of the trustees have any questions about our staff report. And then that will kind of give us open road to move to the training, the advisory body training. So with that all being said, does anybody have any questions about the Director and Librarian Report?
I just have one clarification, just for everybody on this call, I want to clarify. Kathy misspoke in saying that she reports to us and the other recreation board. She does not report to us. She, we are not her boss. We are advisors.
Advisory capacity, let's say that.
Yes.
Yeah, when I say that, I mean, you are our advisors, you're the city's voice. And you, yes, I clearly I report to the city manager, just for everybody's book of knowledge. I'm a department head, I report to city manager and city manager, council. So, yeah, so thank.
In the terms of reporting to us, she gives us information like a reporter would, but she doesn't.
Not a, right.
Not a hierarchical thing. Okay, Deborah, you had a question.
Yes, Kathy, and we could delay this to next month. So if it sounds so open-ended, please just say, okay, we'll discuss this next, next month. Because I know you want to go on to some some other important things. But when I was looking through the report and and what what caught my eye particularly had to do with staffing. As we have said, it and it was referenced where we could look to the Oakland paper who reported on city, state and federal sources of hiring and the dilemmas. It seems to me that as the library moves forward and we become more you know, post-COVID days, we really are going to need to have our our full staff. It's great that you've hired the the person who's starting next week. That'll be a tremendous help to to Linda and so forth. But the other parts, the the part-time people, and so in your further in the in under the, in here in the budget. I I looked at what what, how people are being remunerated at the library for part-time employment. And it struck me as, well, my goodness, Starbucks and Walmart and Target, their hourly wages are higher than the library is offering. And obviously, they don't have to have the skills that they're who they're hiring. So if a person was looking for a part-time job, even having the love of the library, even feeling that they can make a contribution here. I'm not shocked that they are not being, they've just chosen not to take employment at the library. And so I just wanted to know as an, in the advisory capacity, if we can ever comment or try to brainstorm for new ways to attract people to want to commit to taking these jobs, you know? We could, you know, PCC and advertise to help people who are just starting their college career to boost their their CVs with the association with the San Marino Library. We could go to Cal State LA. We could advertise in a different way. I think if we just continue to do it as it has been done, we see the results. These these jobs are going unfilled and that that frightens me and and or concerns me. And the word perilous was used in one of your reports. That is so, the the staffing is is getting so tentative that you you were considering closing or changing the hours, reducing the hours. And we don't want that to happen, especially when we're about to open up and expand and go back to and maybe exceed what how we used to serve people. So, okay, I said my two cents and I don't know if it can be addressed through some some fashion, but. But I can't tell you how much I appreciate the observation. And I will maybe ask Steve or talk, you know, we can maybe agree that the agenda for next month, that we can bring a staff report to help kind of understand the our budget structure, historic recruitment and and efforts. But but you're absolutely right. You brought up so many different points. So but let's add this maybe as a staff item next month.
Lois had the comment. Let's have the Lois Baker comment.
I agree with Deborah. That was the one thing that I looked at when I looked at the reports was how minimal the salaries for for part-time employees, I thought.
Music to our ears. We just need help building a case to be able to get into more of a competitive market with just our neighboring cities.
Kathy, could I ask you to please, maybe for next meeting, have that kind of comparison of what are Starbucks employees getting? What are what are some of the local things? Just so we can have a something visual to show.
Ourselves, absolutely. We would benchmark ourselves, though, first off with other cities and other libraries. And then the and then the public sector market.
Exactly. And then and then and then if you could work with us to to have us, how do we help explain that to council or any other decision-making bodies that that this is ridiculous? Because my my observation, I know, like, like my observation has, over the years, has been any public sector employees married to a teacher. We expect you to do phenomenal work, go above and beyond, and we're going to pay you this much. So I've been on both management and labor science, but, you know, when when you when you have to close the library because you can't get enough bodies to fill it, because you're not paying enough money. That's a big issue. Deborah's suggestions for recruitment notwithstanding. Sandy and Vivy, do you do either of you have any comments on this, on the report in general or anything else? I'm sorry, Sandy, you're muted.
Kathy, Sandy.
Well, you know, the other consideration I will make to Deborah's point is how the actual staff gets burned out with wearing multiple hats all the time, right? There's only so many things you can do and you do it one day and the next week and the next month, but it gets really exhausting. So the threat of losing wonderful staff just to being burned down because of the lack of, you know, helpers, yeah.
Great point. Thanks, Kathy. I'm sorry, Sandy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just simply wanted to say that I I noticed that, I guess, the reason for the short staff is because of the the how they were being compensated. And I guess I just had a question and maybe this is what next month's discussion is that how are they being, what's the recruitment process right now in terms of getting, you know, these positions filled? And maybe we can think of ways to sort of branch out to increase that recruitment.
Great, thank you. Vivy, did you have anything to add on that subject or anything else in the Director and Librarian Report?
Uh, no, not at this time. Thank you.
All right, then we'll we'll need a motion to accept and file the Director and City Librarian Report. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Genevieve. Wait, you have to say it, so sorry.
Uh, wait, so I'll move for the motion?
Yeah, so so under number ten there, the the wording there is, you you moved that we receive and file the director. It's it's pretty much written out there. You can just kind of say the back end of the sentence.
Where is this?
This says, recommendation, staff recommends that the board receive and file the Director and City Librarian Report. Oh, wait a minute, do we have any public comment on the, check it to the library report? No, okay. Okay.
What page is this that I need to read?
On the agenda, just on the regular agenda. Okay, here, there we go. Anything there where it says recommendation?
Item ten, Genevieve.
There you go. And for future use, the staff does a good job of laying out what what we are, what we're looking to do here. Page three of the fifty three.
Page three.
Somebody else can do it, Lois or Deborah, if you guys want to do it, we don't, or Kathy.
I'll read it. I move to approve the staff recommendation to file the Director and City Librarian Report.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Yeah, I found it.
All right.
Okay, trustee Sedun.
Approved.
Trustee Osagüela.
Approved.
Trustee Derry.
Approved.
Trustee Chen.
I approve.
And Chairperson Del Meyer.
Approved. Let's move on to number eleven, the request to close the library on October fifteenth, twenty twenty two for the library for literary libations. I'm assuming we had no public comment on this before we.
No.
Do we did not? Okay. Is this something you're presenting to us, Kathy?
No, I think at this point, we've mentioned it a few times. If anybody has any questions about the report itself, we are here to clarify. If not, we can move straight to the motion. Right. I like to make a motion that we recommend that the the board approve the closure of the library on October fifteenth for the purpose of holding the library, the literary libations event and request the city council's approval.
Thank you, Deborah. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Lois. Okay, Kristen.
Trustee Sedun.
Uh, I approve.
Trustee Osagüela. Trustee Derry.
Approved.
Trustee Chen.
Approved.
And Chairperson Del Meyer.
Approved.
Motion passed.
All right. Let's move on to our agenda item number twelve, our advisory board training. And with that, we welcome City Clerk Christina Baker. There she is. We were wondering if we'd get to see you. Welcome.
I was trying to squeeze in some work as the rest of your meeting was going on.
I understand. I totally understand. Thanks so much for this and and thanks for your patience in in dealing with us. And this is going to be very valuable. And I again wanted to thank everybody for, thank the city for agreeing to move this down one month. The original plan was to do this last month, but we had two departing members and four brand new people, so it just made sense to do it this month. So thanks for that.
Absolutely. And so today's training will.
Absolutely. Um, so today's training will kind of just be a general advisory body training. I've been giving it to every single board and commission. And, um, so we're going to go over kind of the big areas, our roles and responsibilities, the Brown, Ralph and Brown Act and meetings that work. So I'm going to share my screen and start my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, so here we go. And I do have spots for questions throughout, but if you have any burning questions, you know, please feel free to interrupt me. So we're going to start with advisory body roles and responsibilities. So first, what is an advisory body? An advisory body is any commission, committee, board that advises the city council. Advisor bodies are established by the city council. And as you all are aware, members are appointed by the city council. And here in San Marino, we have members serve either two, three, four-year terms, depending on the body. You are limited to two consecutive terms. DRC is a little bit different. Um, and then after those two consecutive terms, you have to take a two-year break and then you're welcome to come back again. Um, all advisory body terms now start on June 1st. That was just put into place by council. Um, annual recruitment begins March or April. It's been April historically, but that doesn't feel like left enough time for me, so I'm trying to move that up to March. And then any vacant spots that occur, we fill those as needed.
Sorry, Christine, could I, could I interrupt you for a second? Just, uh, we, we have a tendency to use acronyms and we have new people who may not know what DRC is or PC. Or if you could, thank you.
Yeah, DRC is the Design Review Committee. Um, it's one of our advisory bodies. And then, so as I was saying, the five member, um, every board has five members. The Planning Commission, the Design Review Committee, and then you guys, the Library Board of Trustees also have two alternate members um, that serve to create quorum. Planning Commission and Design Review Committee alternates are even more important for them because they have a lot of times where they have to accuse themselves because they live within a certain parameter of a project or things like that. Um, each advisory body meets at least monthly. We do have a couple of times throughout the year where we don't meet. For instance, most go dark in August and going dark means you just don't have the meeting that month. Um, and then absences are a big deal, right? So if you don't have a quorum, you can't have the meeting. So it's important that everybody's there. And as Chair Doemeyer had said earlier in the meeting, that if you aren't going to be able to be there, please make sure that you let him know in advance so that way we can ensure alternates are here or, you know, make adjustments as needed. San Marino has five advisory bodies, the Planning Commission, the Library Board of Trustees, the Design Review Committee, the Public Safety Commission, and the Recreation Commission that Director Johnson mentioned earlier. All right, what does an advisory body do? An advisory body is an ear for the council. They're another, they're an additional forum to encourage citizen participation. They allow for in-depth analysis of specific issues. And at the same time, they allow for broad perspective on those issues because we have even more members of the community looking at them. And they advise, they send advisory recommendations to council like you're doing just today by approving the closure, uh, by recommending the closure of the library for the foundation specs. That's what we're doing in the city judicial. And what judicial is that they can actually make rulings. And that's the Planning Commission and Design Group Committee that they can actually make decisions that are enforceable. Now, all of those decisions that those two bodies make can be appealed up to the city council, but they are also, they are a bit more than just advisory. What advisory bodies do not do? They do not make citywide policy. They do not direct budget decisions. They do not impact operations and they do not direct staff. Those are responsibilities either that the city council has or the city manager has. All right, member requirements. And since so many of you are new, this shouldn't be too surprising. You have to take an oath of office. You're required to submit your FBPC Form 700. I need all of you newbies to turn those in by this Friday. Um, and then you will complete one annually thereafter. Um, for the Library Board of Trustees, I am your filing officer, so you just need to turn them in to me. I do need what signatures? And then you also need to do an ethics training every two year. Every two years you have to do one, you have to complete it within the first year and it's just an hour-long training. Just remember.
Yep, sorry. I wonder if another question, the oath of office, has that already occurred for these people? Did you do that with them? The reason I ask is when I joined, would the librarian did it at a meeting with me?
Yes. Um, I think everybody except maybe Deborah, but I think Deborah is on the books from before.
Oh, no, I, I, no, I, I did it. You were absent that day and someone who stood in for you to.
Perfect. So yes, we're all covered. I was the only one I wasn't positive on.
So you did it with them? Is that how it works now?
Yeah, well, just be, if we were meeting in person, we would have done the same thing, just gotten there a bit early and done it right then. But, um, we did ask them to come in and do their oath of office prior to this meeting.
Thank you very much.
I was out for like a week and a half, so I'm still trying to catch up. Okay. And then for the ethics training, just remember that ethics laws create a floor for public officials. It's not the ceiling, so try and keep ethics in mind in all things that you do. And this will kind of come back around later in the training as well. Uh, remember, it's always important to have good advisory body member working relationships. So that's like with each other, right? Always show respect for individuals' viewpoints. Allow other members adequate time to present their views fully before making confidence. Be open and honest. And especially for so many people that are new, or maybe this is their first time on advisory board, you know, try to make them feel welcome, help them understand what's going on. Because if you've never been through this before, it can be quite a lot confusing. All right, there's also, um, city council member liaisons to each advisory body. They are not advisory body members, so they don't vote on this, but they are there just to provide better communication. They can provide context for certain things that are going on. The Library Board of Trustees, the delegate is council member Udi, and the alternate is Vice Mayor Tolts. And they often attend meetings, um, you'll see, so you'll see them quite a bit as well. And you all interviewed with them when you tried to join the board. All right, and then you also, we also have staff liaisons. So your staff liaisons obviously are Director Johnson, City Librarian Vera, and Management Analyst Shigenaga. What they do is they do provide administrative support to the library board. They ensure meeting compliance. They are there to advise you. They provide any technical expertise that may be needed. They act as a conduit for communication to council members, to other staff, maybe to residents. They will present your recommendations to the city council. So the library closure, that will be Director Johnson presenting that recommendation to the council. Um, and please remember that they do deserve to be treated and respected as professionals. This is their job. We want to make sure that everybody's being treated respectfully. What they do not do, they do not work directly for the advisory body. They do not provide full-time support to advisor body members and they are not there to provide individual reports, favors, or any special consideration for members. They are there to assist the board at large to, to better the city and not there for any individual member. Any questions on these general roles and responsibilities? Nope, okay. And I will move on to the Ralph and Brown Act. And for anybody that's already been on, I'm sorry, was there a question? Uh, anybody that's, that's been on any kind of, um, public board or commission in California, you've hopefully seen this, it applies to everybody in the state. Um, and I'm going to read these two lines that are bolded because I really do think they're important. Um, so it is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. So the Ralph and Brown Act is the law that requires all of our government bodies, legislatures, to hold, to hold and conduct business in open, in the public. So all meetings, as I was saying, the body need to be open to the public. All persons are allowed, are permitted to attend. And all actions at the legislative body should be taken openly. And so this is kind of a weird, the note here, this includes posts on social media and group text messaging. So if you are posting on social media about library board business, if you guys start commenting or we retweeting or liking even like a thumbs up or heart, that can get you in trouble with the Brown Act. In most areas of the Brown Act, it takes three people to be considered a meeting because that would be quorum for us. Um, but on social media posts, it's only two. So, you know, Chair Doemeyer posts something about library board activity and then trustee, um, Derry goes on and likes it, then that's actually in conflict of the Ralph and Brown Act. So my recommendation is just to stay away from liking each other's posts or anything when it comes to the library board business or anything that could be kind of perceived as library board business.
So ignore my TikTok posts, everyone. Don't, don't look at that at all.
Okay, so what are the essentials for an open and public meeting? The meeting must be noticed. Uh, the agenda has to adequately describe the items that are going to be considered. The board cannot take action on any items that were not listed on the agenda. And members of the public must be given the opportunity to address the body on any items and on any topic that the library board would cover. And then for the council, they do have a closed session ability for very specific cases, but that does not apply to our advisory bodies. Okay, what makes a meeting? A meeting includes any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body. So that's anytime, any congregation, where you're all there at the same time and the same place to hear, discuss, or deliberate anything that falls within your subject matter jurisdiction. So keep that in mind. All right, there's also two different types of meetings typically that you guys will have. You have your regular meetings and these are the ones that are set by council resolution. So that's today's meeting. It requires that the agenda be posted 72 hours in advance, both physical and physical locations and online. And, um, the public must have an opportunity to provide comment on any subject matter within the jurisdiction of the advisory body. You can also have special meetings. These are, this is any meeting that's not during your council resolution, um, set meeting. Um, and it's, you have to post the agenda 24 hours in advance. We try to do it as soon as possible though, and that's both physical, online. And in this instance, the public only needs to be able to comment on the items listed on the agenda. There doesn't have to be a general public comment period. Now, we typically still provide that because, you know, we always want to provide a residence opportunity to engage. Okay, meetings that are not considered meetings. So these would be anything where a majority of you are together, but it's not considered a meeting. So this would be, you know, social or ceremonial events. So we have the Fourth of July celebration coming up. If you're all at Lacy Park for the Fourth of July, that's not necessarily going to dictate a meeting. Now, if three or more of you get together and all of a sudden start talking about library board trustee business at the Fourth of July celebration, then we start getting into that. So just, you know, just enjoy the holiday. Don't talk business there. If you go to conferences and you all have, and a majority happen to be there, that's not going to dictate it. Again, as long as you're not talking about anything within the subject matter area. Or if you're attending the council meeting, the one at the, the July Friday one, if there's a majority of you attending that council meeting, that's not going to be considered a meeting because you're there acting for another body. Okay, what are not exceptions to a meeting? So any informal gatherings, if you just happen to go get coffee and there's three of you and you're talking, that is not considered, that would be considered a meeting. Um, there's also serial meetings and kind of the two most common are the ones depicted at the bottom of the slide called the daisy chain and the hub and spoke. And this is like a way that boards have kind of tried to get around the meetings. So you have, so the daisy chain is where you have, you know, one trustee will talk to a different one and they'll talk to another one and then they'll talk to another one. And eventually you've all basically been told the exact same thing, but you all did it individually. That would be called the daisy chain and would be in violation of the Brown Act. There's also the hub of spoke where you have one person, like you have one trustee that then goes and talks to each of the other members. That would also be in violation of, um, the Brown Act. So you really, you really want to be careful with those interactions because again, the intent is that all meetings are in public, that all discussion is in public so that the public can participate. All right, meetings and agendas, I touched on this a little bit for agendas. Agendas for regular meetings are posted 72 hours prior to the meeting. The notice requires that they must be posted in a place that's freely accessible to the public. Here, we post them at City Hall, post them at the library, and then we also post them at the Stoneman Building. Yeah, it must be publicly posted in advance of the meeting. It has to say the date, time, and location. So right now, we're in the Zoom world, so it just has the Zoom link. Um, and it also needs to be sent to the members of the advisory body, to local media and any person in the city, any person that has requested the agenda as well. Um, minutes are the official public record of action, um, as has already been discussed today. Everybody else does the action style minutes. Um, you guys have just in the summary, but hey, maybe that's going to change, so that's exciting. Um, we do use recording of meetings to help compose the minutes. Um, and this is an important part, which you guys have actually already done today. You can approve minutes even if you were not at that meeting. So you're fine to approve them even if you weren't actually at that meeting. Kind of talked about this, um, so regular meetings posting is 72 hours in advance. Special meetings is 24. There's also adjourned meetings, which I don't know if you guys, you guys will really have. Those also have a 24-hour, um, posting requirement and continued hearings, which is really applicable to the Design Review Committee and the Public Planning Commission because they do a lot of hearings for their items. All right, approved actions for non-agenda items. So I said earlier that you can't take action on anything that's not on an agenda. But there's an exception to every rule. So here's kind of the exceptions. So if you have a public, so briefly respond to statements made or questioned. So if you have a public commenter that comes up and makes a statement or has questions, you cannot take action on what they're saying, but you can certainly provide clarifying information to them or you can do a follow-up question for some clarification. You can also ask staff to kind of bring that topic back on as an agenda item in the future. Um, as you guys have done, uh, you can make, you have your different liaison reports and stuff. You can make those announcements on your activities other. You can also provide some reference material to staff if need be. Um, and you can direct staff to report back or to place a matter of business on a future agenda item, but that's going to be determined as staff time permits. So it's not really, you know, next meeting, you have to bring this back. It's, hey, in the future, I, you know, as soon as possible, please, please bring this back. And then staff will work with you to get that on the future agenda. Okay, rights of the public, um, this is a huge portion for the Brown, Brown Act. All persons shall be permitted to turn, to attend the meeting. You can, they cannot be required to provide their names or any other information to attend a meeting. Now, we often do ask people to state their name and address, um, to help write context, but there's no requirement that they do so. Um, and meetings cannot be held in any facility that would prohibit somebody from attending the meeting. Um, and the public does have a right to record all public meetings. We've had this at council meetings, um, that someone came in with a GoPro strapped to their chest and just recorded the whole meeting and there is perfectly allowed. Um, agendas and other writings that have been distributed to a majority of the body also have to be made available to the public. Um, now, if this is staff providing it to the advisory body, then they also need, prior to the meeting, then they also need to make it available to the public prior to. We typically do this by just, um, including it on the city website in the gen and minutes section. Um, if it's presented at the meeting, um, then it has to be made available post the meeting for the public. And again, the public must be allowed to speak on any item on the agenda or anything, any subject matter within the jurisdiction. Okay, you can put a limit on conduct of meetings. So you can put time limits on comment at council meetings. Right now, we limit public comment to two minutes. For public hearings, we have a 10-minute time limit for, you know, each group, appellant and applicant to, you know, kind of give their side of the case. You can also disrupt, uh, you can put limits on disruptive conduct. Now, most of this is going to probably apply for when we're back in person, but you may have a public comment to come on here who's, you know, unmuting themselves constantly. You are allowed to, to, to take some steps to, to help, you know, remove that disruption. Limits on irrelevant speech, so you're free to kind of bring people back around to the subject at hand. Um, and you can also put a time limit on when the last item is taken up. So if you're like, no, we have, you know, the meeting starts at eight, we won't hear any new item after 10:00 AM, you can put that limit on there. Um, and then again, this is more for when you're back in person, but even on Zoom, don't linger. You know, as soon as the meeting's over, get out of there. Because again, it could, um, you know, give the, create the impression that there's business still being discussed and is there a majority there and is in a Brown Act violation? So it's really best that once the meeting concludes to just, you know, head on out. If there is violations of the Brown Act, there is possible criminal action and civil remedies that could take place by the district attorney, by the district attorney or any interested person. So, you know, just really keep these in mind when you're going through. All right, any questions on the Ralph and Brown Act? I know that was pretty quick. All right, so now I'm going to move on to meetings that work. This is probably more interesting part for you guys. Okay, first I'm going to start with meetings that don't work, meetings that can be late. So we want to make sure, you know, that everybody's arriving on time so that the chair can, you know. So we want to make sure, you know, that everybody's arriving on time so that the chair can, you know, start the meeting on time. Meetings that last too long, constant interruptions between each other. If nothing really gets done, if there's no actions really taken and it's just a bunch of discussion, if there's, you know, chronic absenteeism where you're not able to have the meeting. Or if there's uncomfortable accommodations, again, this is probably, you know, more for when you're back in person, but if the room's too hot and, you know, people aren't doing their best when they're not comfortable. All right, what is the role of the chair? So the chair convenes the meeting, they keep the board on tap, to stay on the agenda, they keep the meeting moving, keep control of the meeting, encourage participation. Listen before stating your position, this is why often the chair is the last to say how they feel about any item. And then monitor if there's any follow-up assignments from an item. What are the responsibilities of a member? Arrive on time is obviously the big one. Arrive on time, make sure you're listening to whatever everybody is saying. Wait to be recognized by the chair before asking your question or stating your opinion. Come prepared to the meetings, you know, make sure you're reading through the agenda packets and you understand everything that's going on. Be respectful of others as they're giving their opinions or asking their question and try to focus your remarks to the decision at hand. You know, if there was a previous item that didn't go your way, maybe you're in the minority, you know, try and let that go and move on to the next item. And make sure you're contributing, right? Council's appointed you, these boards are here for a reason, you know, council wants to hear from you, they want to know what's going on, so please make sure you're contributing. And then, you know, commit and follow through. All right, here's our parliamentary procedures. It's, we use modified Rosenberg's rules. So Rosenberg rules are actually a simplified version of Robert's rules of parliamentary procedures. Rosenberg's rules were created for smaller bodies like our advisory bodies and our council. They're a bit more practical, logical, you're a little more user friendly to use by cities, counties, all over the nation. And we further modified it to allow for discussion prior to the motion, so that's that little change. So how that works for each agenda item? So the chair should announce the agenda item number and the subject of the agenda item. Then the chair requests an agenda presentation or report from staff. The chair then will ask members if they have any questions regarding the item. Then the chair will ask for any public comment. Then the chair will open the item for discussion by the members. Then the chair will ask for a motion and a second, and then ask for a vote or roll call. And then the result will be announced either by the chair or by the advisory body secretary. Right now, because we're fully Zoom meetings for advisory bodies, you do have to do a roll call for each vote. When you're back in person, then you can just, you know, ask for a's and nays. But right now, through Zoom, it is a requirement that all motions are voted on through a roll call. Okay. Motions and counting votes. So the most basic motion is the, I move to receive and file the reports, blah, blah, blah. I move to approve the recommendation of staff that we, blah, blah, blah. You can also amend the motion, so if there's already a motion and a second on the floor, then you can move to amend the motion to include something. You can also substitute the motion. Amend is probably more common, or you get to that before substitute motion. I don't see that too much, usually if a motion's gone through, then we'll vote on it and just, you can always do a second motion. You can motion to reconsider an item. So this is a little bit tricky, it's not done often, but if an item was voted on, completed, passed, did not pass either direction, that item can be reconsidered. If, if a member that voted in the majority for that item asks for it to be reconsidered. They can do a motion to ask that be reconsidered. If that motion passes, then you would go back to that item and do it all over again from the very beginning. Counting the votes, since we are a five-member body, it's three yeses that are needed for a motion to pass. If a tie happens, so say, you know, you only have four people there, you don't have five and it's a tie, then that means the motion does not pass. So you could either leave it as is, which mean no action happened, you can do another motion to pass it or not, so.
Ask a question on this slide, the, the previous slide, the basics of meeting what the chair needs to do, that's in the handbook, which is fantastic. And I'm going to be using that, this next slide that you just showed. Is there a way we can get a copy of that for the board members? That's because that's not included in the handbook. Just so everyone has this, so they've, they've got what their, what their motions.
Yeah, I, we can.
Procedure is.
Send this out. I don't think I've posted this to the website yet. I'll have to check the handbook because I thought I did include it, but I'll.
Oh, I didn't see it, it might be in there, it could, could be in there, but that's, this is having, I'm a big fan of templates, so that's why I, I love this.
I am with you on that.
Yeah, right?
But yes, I can certainly send out the PowerPoint presentation so you all have access to it. My plan is also to have this posted on the boarding commission page on our website. The handbook is currently there too, and this as well, that'd be helpful.
The handbook is awesome, thanks.
Next, we'll go on to courtesy and decorum. So it's important that only one person has the, has the floor at any given time and that they're recognized by the chair before speaking. This just helps keep things clean and moving along efficiently. Discussion debate should again, always focus on the item at hand and should always be free and open. There are certain instances, because again, there's an exception to every rule, there are certain instances when it's okay to interrupt a speaker. You can ask for privilege, a point of privilege. This is typically used for something, you know, like the example says, if the room's too hot or cold, you can ask for a point of privilege to have the air turned on or the heater turned on or whatever. You can also interrupt for a point of order. This would be, you know, like you're trying to remind people, hey, can we get back to the agenda? If maybe a tangent's been taking off and you're going off, you would ask for a point of order, which is kind of, hey, chair, can we get back to the agenda? You can do a appeal, that would be if the chair does something that the rest of the members don't agree with. That one doesn't really happen too often, let's see. You can call for orders of the day, this is also like, hey, can we get back to the agenda? And then you can withdraw a motion. So if you've put a motion out there and it hasn't been voted on, you can always withdraw a motion rather than letting it continue on. Okay, what is important to remember in making decisions? Make sure we're focusing remarks on the issue at hand. So again, this is the, something happened previously that you weren't too happy with, just let that go, be the duck with the water roll off your back. Consider and be respectful of all viewpoints, that's, you know, your fellow trustees and, you know, the public. Make sure you're contributing and asking questions. Be open-minded and be thorough, but brief, you know, we want to make sure we're moving along, so. When to accuse yourself, this is probably more specific to the design review committee and the planning commission. But there could, certainly could be instances for you guys, when there's a possible conflict, that's when you should recuse yourself or, you know, you shouldn't be voting on an item. So conflict exists when a position you hold in, influenced your government decision, if you have personal economic interest. If the effect will be material for yourself, where it's not for the general public at large. Or if the, or if any effect really is distinguishable from the public. So what would be an exist, it's much easier for the design review committee and planning commission because they all have a project that's happening. And, you know, if they live within a certain radius, then they recuse themselves. For you all, if there's some, I don't know, if there's some library activity that maybe we're going to contract for and you guys are weighing in on it. And maybe, you know, your spouse or something works for that company, that would be an instance where you should probably accuse yourself. If you're, you know, ever not sure, then you certainly should, you know, work with your staff liaisons. And then the city attorney's office is always there for help as well. Again, I don't know if this one's, that happens too often for you all. All right, any questions about meetings that work? Okay, I know, here's my contact information, oops. There's my contact information. You know, I'm always here for any questions that you may have. I'm glad to hear references to the handbook, I just updated that not too long ago, so everybody hopefully has access to that. If you find anything that should be included, that would be helpful, you know, let me know because I want to make sure that's as helpful as possible. I know this was kind of quick, but the handbook has a lot more information in there, and if you do have any further questions, you know, please feel free to reach out to me.
I have a quick question. So I know the agenda is posted 72 hours before the meeting, is it is also true for ourselves? Like, do we see the agenda before those 72 hours or no?
So it should be, Kristin, you can jump in here, but it should be sent to you. You probably receive an email with a link to the agenda once it's posted. So for city council meetings, I, for our Wednesday meetings, I post the Friday before, so I post online. And then I send council a link with it and say like, here's the agenda that's been posted.
So we don't, we don't see it before it's posted to the public?
No, it, it all kind of goes out at the same time.
Thank you.
On that subject, Kristin, could I continue to get physical copies of the, of the packet? It's, it's saving me about a lot of time. I'm an electronic guy, but this is really helpful.
Can I ask who else would like to see, like to receive hard copies of the agenda packets?
Would.
Oh man, sorry, opened up the.
No, that's, okay, so by a show of hands, so it looks like, is there anybody that does not want a physical copy? Please raise your hand. Okay, so everybody appreciates getting a physical copy. And, and then I wanted to also add, just as a kind of a process again. Kathy and maybe to the rest of the board, Kristin and I actually meet with the chair prior to developing the agenda. So one, the, the chair will approve all of the items that we bring forth. So the chair is a collaborative member of developing that agenda. It's not just us and then we give it, you know, the staff and then we publish the, the agenda. And in this case, it's Steve, so we've been meeting with Steve and we do so a week prior. And then we agree on the agenda and then it gets published and shared with all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for our city clerk regarding the training? Any other procedural issues, questions? Let me just say how much I appreciate you taking the time to do this with us, it's, it's very, very helpful. Again, let me commend you on the, become the compilation, the handbook, very well designed, very well laid out, very easy to absorb. I really appreciate that. If, is there any other questions on anything else, any of the discussion before we wrap up the meeting? All right, well then, thank you very much for attending. We conclude this meeting and we are adjourned until Monday, July 25th at 8 a.m. via Zoom. Thanks, everyone.
And hope to see you at Fourth of July.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye.